Good evening. Thanks for coming out on this cold, wet day. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Darrell Keeney, Lighthouse Baptist Church, 3919 Green Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, you ask us to pray with thanksgiving and so in obedience to that, God, I thank you for these that are willing to serve and those that are willing to do the behind-the-scenes administration work for our city. Lord, I pray wisdom for them and insight with the many decisions that they have to make day to day, even sometimes moment to moment. Give them insight, give them a knowledge of your will. Father, I thank you for this city and how you have blessed it. Pray your continued blessing upon it. And Father, I ask wisdom for this meeting tonight, that you just lead and guide in the various areas that come before this group. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Keeney. Item number two, Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which has posted the entry to the council chamber. Item 3, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports.
Subitem A is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Burns?
I am moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second. My Mr. Preister, discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Subitem B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a citizen or a city council member requests, in which case it will be removed from the consent agenda and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Subitem 1 is the approval of minutes of the January 8, 2018, meeting of the city council. Item 2, approval of claims. Item 3, request for permission to purchase a 2018 Chevrolet Colorado for the recreation department using the joint power, excuse me, the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract and Equipment Technology LLC in an amount not to exceed $29,606. Item 4, approval for the mayor to sign the yearly maintenance agreement for AEDs with physio control in the amount of $2,376. Mayor and council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
I would ask that item 3 on the pickup truck be moved to item 12B and discussed under current business.
Is there anything else from the council? See none, Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the one item removed.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 4, approval of claims is under consent. Item 5, special presentation, none. Item 6, liquor license.
Subitem A is Demi Holland LLC doing business as Frank's Pizzeria, application for a Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on sale only at 3608 Twin Creek Drive, and for Joshua Dimick as manager.
Welcome. Perfect timing.
Right. Sorry.
Could state your name.
My name is Joshua Dimick. I'm owner-operator of Demi Holland, doing business as Frank's Pizzeria.
Is there anything you'd like to say about the pizzeria?
Um, just a lot of pizzeria.
Okay. If you go ahead and sign in, please. I'll open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none coming forward. Close of public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the Demi Holland LLC doing business as Frank Pizzariza, Pizzariza, Pizzeria, application for a Class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits, on sale only at 3608 Twin Creek Drive, and for Joshua Dimick as manager.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
Thank you. Yes, I'll be abstaining from voting on items 6A and B for religious and personal reasons.
Are there any others? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Item B, Knights of Columbus Council, number 11879, St. Matthew's Parish, applications for special designated liquor licenses to sell beer and wine during Lenten Fish Fries at St. Matthew's Parish Center 12, excuse me, 11210 South 36th Street from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM on six consecutive Friday nights from February 16 through March 23, 2018.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Sanders, city council members. My name is Dave Boone. I'm the Deputy Grand Knight representing Council 11879 of the Knights of Columbus at St. Matthew's Parish. We're requesting our liquor license for the year for our annual fish fries. They run from February 16 through March 23. We certainly appreciate your consideration of this concern. We've been holding fish fries since 1996 without incident and will begin, or once again, will be very diligent in following the laws and guidelines set forth by the state of Nebraska and the city of Bellevue. Again, we thank you for your concern and consideration of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time if you'd like.
Are there any questions? Go ahead and sign in. I'll open for public hearing on this, at this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none coming forward. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Shannon?
Mayor, I would recommend that we advance a recommendation for approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, beer and wine during Lenten Fish Fries at St. Matthew's Parish Center 11210 South 36th Street from 5:00 to 7:30 on six consecutive Friday nights from February 16 through March 23, 2018.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 7, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Subitem A is ordinance number 3894, amending section 6-0 and adding section 6-23 and 6-47 of the Bellevue Municipal Code to allow for pet advocacy permits, I'll read the title, and ordinance to amend section 6-0 and to add sections 6-23 and 6-47 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animals, to repeal section 6-0 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Mr. Modri?
Yes, I move that we approve ordinance number 3894.
And I would second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 8, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
Subitem A is ordinance number 3895, repealing ordinance number 3879, I'll read the title, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 3879 adopted by the Bellevue City Council on May 8, 2017, creating street improvement districts numbers 2017-1 to 207-4, inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska.
I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be on February the 12.
Subitem B is ordinance number 3896, repealing ordinance number 3879, I'll read the title, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 3879 adopted by the Bellevue City Council on August 4, excuse me, August 14, 2017, creating sidewalk improvement districts number 2017-1 to 2017-6, inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska.
I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. Third reading would be on March 12 as well.
Subitem C is ordinance number 3897, creating street improvement districts 2018-1 through 2018-6, for the purpose of bonding, the title and ordinance, creating street improvement districts number 2017, 2018-1 to 2018-6, inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. The next, the third reading will be on February the 12.
Subitem D is ordinance number 3898, creating street improvement districts, excuse me, sidewalk improvement districts 2018-1 through 2018-6, the title of the ordinance, and ordinance creating sidewalk improvement districts 2018-1 to 2018-6, inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, ordering the construction of sidewalk improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. We'll close the public hearing. The third reading will also be on February the 12.
Subitem E is ordinance number 3899, amending sections 5.22, 5.23, and 5.2 of the Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding self-service laundry facilities, I'll read the title of the ordinance, and ordinance to amend sections 5.22, 5.23, and 5.24 of ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to laundry, self-service automatic, in the BG, General Business Zoning District, BGM, Metropolitan General Business Zoning District, and BGH, Heavy General Business Zoning District, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please do so.
While I'm signing in, I just have one question, and that is, where in the heck is this located? Is it the one in the bank of the West Building, or is it the one that's just across the street, or where is it?
It's the one across the street.
This is actually, excuse me, this is a, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so it would apply to any laundromat in the zoning district.
Oh, okay. That answers my question. Thank you very much.
To answer your question, I'm actually the one that actually believed that you had to follow city ordinances for the city of Bellevue, and I established a laundromat that has exactly 30 washers, but it's not an enforced ordinance from the city of Bellevue at this time. But I do actually feel that it is a good city ordinance. The original laundromat that I was going to build was actually scheduled for 48 washers, but with this, you actually have a level playing field, and I actually think that protects a lot of things. So I built a 30 washer laundromat, and I used all high-efficiency equipment. Since I was restricted, I didn't use any top loaders, which use four times more water than a simple front loader. It uses like a fourth of the energy cost. And like actually, mine are all high-efficiency machines that use less gas. Like if you take this out, you're going to have people that are going to come in here with a throwaway top loader that costs $600, that you can just turn and burn, but you can lower, you can have a discount, and they're energy hogs, but it allows you to bring people in with the cheaper thing, like the cheaper load, and then you'll get people to come in there, but of course, they're all taken because they're the discount item, so then they have to go use the more expensive machines. And I would just say that if you look at Bellevue, you guys have actually very nice laundromats. And the reason I built a laundromat here is because they're all very full and they're all very successful. And you actually have one that is a very, very poor laundromat that has a lot of damage from break-ins, there's cut-up stuff, there's windows broken, the machines are all out of order. And this happens to be the laundromat that is on Harrison Street, which is right next to Omaha, which I also have laundromats in. I've counted Bluffs, Fremont, no restrictions. So that laundromat has to compete with four laundromats very close to it, like my own, where I can put as many as I want in and just punish everybody around them. And this thing has become declined, and it's, you know, people will be in there drinking and loitering and everything else, and there's nothing that can prevent that because you can't change the city of Omaha's boundary line. So like I said, someone had some foresight when they did it, and it actually does prevent, you know, someone coming in and monopolizing and cannibalizing the market. And like I said, I don't actually understand why we're actually meeting about this for the fact that it's not even enforced anyway.
Can I have you, for the record, state your name and address, please?
My name is Peter Mayberry. My address is 505 Galvin Road North.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to say anything? See none. I'll close the public hearing on this item. The third and final reading will be on February the 12.
Subitem F is ordinance number 3900, rezoning lots 1 through 227 and outlots A through D Falcon Point, I'll read the title of the ordinance, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of ordinance number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southwest corner of South 48th Street and Cape Hart Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing.
Doug Kellner with Thompson, Dresen, Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, requesting approval of preliminary plat meets the comprehensive plan. We are requesting two different zonings. The RS72 would be the traditional-style housing, and the RG50PS would be more of a villa-type home, probably in the $250,000 range, the range, the traditional housing, the RS72 would be more in the $400,000 range house. I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Shannon?
My only question is, is where the neighborhood businesses are going to go to service this area? I mean, we're putting a lot of houses on Cape Hart Road now, so you fill up your whole square with houses, not leaving any area for neighborhood businesses. I mean, there's got to be daycare, gas station, you know, laundromat, you know, different things, you know, to service all these businesses. So where are these going to go?
I believe the comp plan has them in a different location. The comprehensive plan has this as residential right now. Maybe more of a question for Mr. Shuchek to...
Mr. Shuchek.
I believe you asked the same question when we went through Bell Lago, and the corner of 36th Street and Cape Hart Road, both the northwest and southwest corners are currently zoned for business-type uses, so that is where the designated commercial areas would be.
So we're forfeiting everything west of there?
We're following what's in the adopted comprehensive plan.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Shuchek? See none. Thank you very much.
Subitem A on that item is the approval of the preliminary plat for lots 1 through 227 and outlots A through D at Falcon Point.
And I'm open for public hearing on this item as well. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Questions from the council? See none. I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be on February the 12. Item 9, ordinance for deduction, first reading, none. 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, there are none. 11, resolutions.
Subitem A is reconsideration of resolution number 2018-02, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the labor agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 4906, for the period of 2017 through 2022.
Mr. Burns?
No.
No?
Is the motion to reconsider?
He can make a motion.
So we need to go back to...
We've got to see what he's doing first.
Mr. Burns?
I was...
The motion needs to be, Modri. Is that...
Well, the motion can be any of the three people who voted against it.
That's right.
Or somebody that wasn't here.
Has to be on the prevailing side.
Mr. Modri, your hands were up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we reconsider our vote from last week on, or last meeting on resolution number 2018-02.
Anybody can second.
Anyone can second that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussions, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12?
No.
Nope.
No.
So we need a motion?
So now, now you have the motion back on the floor that was previously on there, so you can just vote on the, on the matter. The original motion's on the matter, so we just need to take a vote.
Any questions? Please vote. Oh, Mr. Shannon?
We don't have a motion to have discussion. We need them.
You, it's back on the table, so it's like that motion and second is back on the table. You can sit and discuss it now. Yep.
All right. And discussion?
Discussion. Mr. Shannon?
All right. I've talked to a lot of people and had a lot of input from the public on this, and my, my big problem with this contract remains the same. This contract contains a provision that we're going to pay people 12 hours of overtime a week for, or a month for not working overtime, and the CIR is not making us do this. I understand the CIR is making us do the thing with the captains, okay? I can get along with that one, but paying people overtime that they don't work is a, is a bridge too far. We have to consider what our other unions are going to, how they're going to react to this. We have to consider the voters of Bellevue that are going to see their mortgages go up every month while we're paying overtime people aren't working. I just think this is a bridge too far. I mean, there are plenty of examples in the police department. If the detectives are working overtime, the patrolmen aren't getting overtime. I mean, this is just the way it works in life. Some people are getting overtime, some people aren't. To say we're going to pay everybody is, is just not the way things are done, and it's, we're looking at a fire department we can't even afford to pay for the people that we're hiring. Now we're going to start giving away free overtime? I think that's too far. And so I still have a problem with the, the contract as brought to us, and I would be more than happy if we amend this and say, go back and take that provision out. I'd be happy to vote for this, but not with the overtime provision in it.
Mr. Manjimali?
This was explained in detail to you, Mr. Shannon. This affects only two persons that are in the bureau, and this is to balance out their time with the other people who are in suppression. It's not every employee. It's only two employees in the department, and nobody's going to have to get a new mortgage to, to pay for this item. It was a negotiated item, and it stands as part of the contract. I would ask the rest of the council to vote in favor of the contract as presented.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that we should be frugal and fiscally responsible.
Thank you. I appreciate that we should be frugal and also fiscally responsible. However, we were told at the last meeting that this entire package is going to cost about $60,000 a year. With Bellevue having a population of roughly 60,000 people, this is only going to cost $1 per year, per person. So hopefully, that won't cause anybody to sell or have a problem with their mortgage. The 18 captains or positions that we would be obligated to pay for or to fill if this went to the CIR is far greater and a far greater expense than the 10 that we've negotiated. So I appreciate what the union has done in their negotiations. I appreciate what the administration has done to give us an overall good package. In every negotiation, there are some things you like and some things you don't, but overall, you have to negotiate, you have to finalize an agreement and come to some conclusion. I think this is a good conclusion, and I would just add, in terms of taking it to the Commission of Industrial Relations, one of the reasons that that's there and what has always been intended is that it's predictable. That's what both sides want. Administrations want to know what the outcome is going to be as much as they can before it goes to them. Labor unions want to know what the outcome is going to be before it goes there. We have good predictability. The rules are clear, and so rather than have to spend additional money on lawyers, on special witnesses, on experts, this tells us pretty clearly what's going to happen, and we know that, and the union knows that. So rather than even do that, we have a system in place that mediates and negotiates through the CIR, and that's intentional. We can't have firefighters going on strike. Somebody doesn't get a labor contract and they decide to go on strike, you don't want that family or that person needing that emergency care to not have it. The same with the police, the same with streets. Public employees are not allowed to strike. The only resolution that they have for a labor contract is to go to the CIR. And when the CIR provides full predictability, everybody knows in advance. So you negotiate the contract, it forces people to come together, they get some things they don't like, the cities get some things they don't like, but this is a good contract. We're not going to get a better one. I appreciate what the firefighters have given up. I appreciate what we've got in it. I appreciate that the chief has done an exceptional job of carrying on for nine years this transition from volunteers to paid, by using the volunteers and then by transitioning them to part-time and by getting two-saver grants. The city of Bellevue has saved millions of dollars. We need a good fire department, and we need to compensate them adequately. I think this does it, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Are there any others? Mr. Shannon?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Of course, I was not here at the last meeting. My only real issue is that we delegate a responsibility to a team that actually goes out and negotiates with the union. And unless we want to be on those negotiating things and then have us all, have them go back and forth and back and forth and get finally an agreement and then come to us and say, now we're going to start picking apart what they did. I think they've already kind of done all that. I would have to say, unless we change the whole, our whole scenario or management decision and have us negotiate with all the unions as a full council or whatever, which I'm not really wanting to do, then I think we have to have some reliability on the negotiating team on both sides. So in that case, without us picking it apart, I'm going to be supportive of this.
Any other discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 12, current business.
Current business, council members with, I asked for a point of privilege if we could take item 3 from the consent agenda. You've moved it to current business. Mr. Roberts is here right now. He's got to leave in a few minutes to get over to our town hall meeting on the solid waste. Could we take item 3 before we take the other items?
Could we take item three before we take the other items? With that item, item s-
See?
Twelve, A, then our first item would be the request for permission to purchase a two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Colorado for the recreation department.
So I can motion a second and discussion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the request to purchase a two thousand eighteen Chevy Colorado for the recreation department not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, six dollars, six hundred and six dollars.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion?
Jeff, for me, I don't know what the price difference would be from a full-size to, I, I don't know, I know the Colorado is like a size smaller. What do we gain? And, and just seems like a full-size one, if you gotta pull a trailer, you gotta pull things around, you'd have a little bit more versatility with something a little bit bigger.
Well, the full-size one's gonna probably cost you about thirty-five thousand. I, I haven't looked at what the actual costs are, but that's kind of in the ballpark. The reason they get, use a smaller one so they can get it out of the ball fields a lot easier. It will be able to pull the trailer, which will have a gator with it to take from ball field to ball field. So that's primarily wise more of the versatility of it.
Mr. Shannon.
All right. My, my main question here on the, on this item is why are we purchasing a vehicle for a specific employee on this? I didn't see justification in there why this person in this job needs to have a vehicle, why we don't have a rec department vehicle. I mean, they can't all be in use all at the same time that, you know, he can't have a shared vehicle. We're talking about a deputy assistant, right?
Correct. Yeah, we do have a rec vehicle already. And so if you have two people, they're gonna be at different ball fields, different places in the city. They can't very well share a ride, they're gonna have to have their own vehicle.
Mr. Cook.
I would like just to make a comment to that. Having gone through all the P balls and swimming lessons and all the activities, I, I agree that position needs a vehicle. I've seen Mr. Shada on evenings, on weekends and holidays, and I think it's, I would assume that this new position would step in and handle some of that. But I, I, I think they, they need to have a vehicle because of the amount of, this is not an eight-to-five job.
No, in fact, during the summertime, Mr. Shad has put in hundred and thirty, hundred and forty hours in a pay period, a two-week period. So yes, this position definitely is needed. The other thing we're, why we're looking for a pickup too is because they do pick up a lot of athletic equipment, and they have to haul it around from one field to another. They carry it in the back of the pickup. They use it to get their concessions where I've even helped load up five hundred, or fifty cases of water to fill up the whole pickup bed. So, you know, like I said, it's a versatile piece of equipment that's useful for the recreation department.
Did we check the price on the state contract?
Well, they're, they're still, it's the same thing. It's, it's just a different, different one that does it. But yeah.
This is a multiple state bidding process.
This was the one that was referred to by our fleet department. So yes, that, they do, they investigate that.
There are, Mr. Mojri.
Thank you. When we approved the budget, you know, for the, the new assistant or deputy recreation director, was this also within that budget?
Yes, this is in the CIP.
So, so it's in the budget already?
Yes, in the budget.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is approval of the amendment to the Haida Hills two subdivision agreement to incorporate a phasing plan. The applicant is Mark Johnson for Sanitarium Improvement District three-one-four.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Grody with Lamprey and Erisin. I'm here to represent SID three-one-four, answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Cook.
I might have one better, Mr. Schuchak. Oh, I'm sorry, I, not on this one, on the next one, my fault.
Yep, this is twelve A. Any questions? See none? Thank you for attending this evening. We do need a motion? Mr. Mojri?
Move that we approve the amendment to the Haida Hills two subdivision agreement to incorporate a phasing plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
So item B is approval of the Second Amendment to the Liberty Subdivision Agreement Regarding Ownership and Maintenance Requirements for the Outlots in Liberty Subdivision.
Mr. Cook.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Second Amendment to the Liberty Subdivision Agreement Regarding Ownership and Maintenance Requirements for the Outlots in Liberty.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Schuchak, if I'm reading this right, what happens is that upon annexation by the city, owner of the outlots shall transfer to the homeowners association, which will, which shall continue to be responsible for general maintenance of the outlots, while the city shall be responsible for the water quality, stormwater detention basins. I thought we're, the goal was to turn these outlots over to the Sid and, and then one annex, once annexed, it would remain the care of them under a homeowners association.
You, you are right there. The, the ownership of the outlots will go to the homeowners association upon annexation. They will be required for the general maintenance of those outlots, mowing, weed control, et cetera. The only thing that will be the city's responsibility after annexation will be management, control, maintenance of the water quality and stormwater detention part of those outlots. We have found in the past that homeowners associations really don't know how to take care of it, a stormwater facility. And in order for them to work properly, you know, it's, it's a regional issue. It's something that really the, the city needs to be involved with.
Would the NRD be an appropriate organization to take over the, those types of detention issues?
They probably have the expertise to do it as far as the NRD take, the NRD, I don't think it probably has the manpower to do it. They are, they stretch from here up to Sioux City, the lower plat South NRD, doing detention basins in, in all the SIDs as they become into the city. Probably it's not practical for them.
Some of these new subdivisions will have several outlots and potentially two or three of them could detain water. And I guess my concern is, is that sometime, someday, they'll probably need to be dredged or cleaned out somehow. And if we have dozens of these, I, I don't know how we're gonna be able to keep the maintenance on them for eternity. I mean, I think we would have the same issue with, you know, if there's a homeowners association at Liberty with, say, a couple hundred homes, I'm not sure how big the subdivision is, and they can't keep a couple outlots going, how is the city gonna do it if, if as we continue to approve these subdivisions, we keep on taking ownership of these outlots, which are usually contained or, or for water retention, or they're unbuildable lots? And then we, we have the problem down the road with the expense of potentially, I, I, to me, it could, I think it could be a very expensive situation down the road.
I, I think over time, as the city maintains them during their lifetime, we will have fewer issues with silting in and needing dredging. It's when you have the, I'll say, homeowners association or some other entity that doesn't know what they're doing with it, when you end up with those problems.
I think a lot of times they bring in experts to get advice and then, you know, would bid it out for any work that would need to be done on an outline. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
You?
So item C is approve and authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Bellevue Police Officers Association Regarding the Modified Duty Policy.
Mr. Burns.
I move to approve the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Bellevue Police Officers Association Regarding the Modified Duty Policy.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manjimelli, I, I'm sort of surprised that this is here and why not just covered in, in contract negotiations?
It certainly is going to be included in the contract negotiations, but we wanted to make the change to, because we have two officers that are immediately affected by this. And the current policy, the limitations on the hours, we wanna make sure that they understand that they're gonna be protected.
Will on-duty injuries have priority over off-duty injuries as far as officers coming into work, say, at a desk?
Chief, what, how do you intend to implement this?
There, there is no limitation on the, the time that someone can be on modified duty if they're injured on duty. These are only for off-duty injuries or illnesses.
I guess what I'm trying to get to is that, I mean, we can't, I, I don't know how many it can accommodate, but I would assume there's a number of maybe slots, you know, say, an officer taking reports over a phone. I guess my concern is if, if, if we had only, say, five slots and here comes the sixth person that was injured on duty, would he be given priority or preference over someone that was hurt off duty?
We, we've never had difficulty finding work for people to do on modified duty. The number's usually very small, and if someone's injured on duty and they're available for modified duty, we'll find work for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
And item D is approval of change order from AVI to update the tightrope media system utilized by BTB Channel seventeen at fifteen hundred Wall Street for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the change order from AVI to update the tightrope media system utilized by BTV Channel seventeen at fifteen hundred Wall Street for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion, questions? Mr. Shannon.
I had an opportunity to speak to Phil before the meeting. I know he's tied up right now at another meeting, so can't be here. But this is an unbudgeted item. I've, I've talked to our finance director, and being this is only thirty-two thousand, he feels that we can make up that shortage right now. This would come out of the reserve fund, and that he feels that over the course of the year that we can make up the thirty-two thousand. I also wanted to commend Phil Davidson for bringing this forward now because instead of uninstalling all the equipment here, installing it in the new building, and then within a year, having to pull it all out and pay for another installation, we're gonna save and have just one installation. There is money in the packet for the new city hall already for moving this equipment from here to there. So we're not truly paying out the full thirty-two thousand. Some of this is already budgeted into the process. So I think this is a good item. It increases the capabilities, it upgrades and modernizes what we have, and it gives us a capability we've never had. Council meetings could go live if we so decided, once we have the new equipment on hand. So the public could be watching a council meeting while we're conducting it, based on the, the new equipment that we have here. So I would recommend that we all support this. This is a good item, and it's a cost savings.
Mr. Mojri.
I would agree with all that, Mr. Shannon, as well. I think thirty-two thousand will be made up in maintenance expenses for that old equipment that we're not gonna have to shell out as well, so.
Any other discussion or questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item thirteen, administration report. Comments must be limited to the items on the current report. Are there any questions for Mr. Manjimelli? Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna make a quick comment. I, I read a, for the last time, a city administrator's report from Larry Burks. This will be his last meeting. He will leave the city the Friday before our next meeting, and I just wanna tell Larry thanks for all his hard work and dedication to the city, and I truly believe you are an asset, and I wish you very good luck on your next job.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Are there any other comments, questions for Mr. Manjimelli or the report? See none? Takes us to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city official employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on the individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, a city official employee, or a member of the general public. In City Code, Section two dash six-eight, regarding the manners of dressing the council, copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the outside of the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes. Welcome.
I'm sorry, I forgot to give my name the last time. It's Michael Wills. I live at thirteen twenty-one Harrison Street here in Bellevue. I was interested to read that we're going to get a new swimming pool. Supposedly, the ground is going to be given by the Air Force, and we as taxpayers are gonna build it. Now, that's in the preliminary stage. Nothing's on, in, in writing as of yet, at least that's what they said in the news article. The federal government, whenever you deal with them, they, and they give you anything, they have strings attached. Now, we have plenty of land. First of all, the ground at Fort Crook Road and Cornhusker, good place to put in a swimming pool. Better yet, that boondoggle we used to have down there called a marina. Cut it off from the, the river, put a lid on it, heat the water with electron, with either solar or water power off the river. It'd be real simple. Wouldn't cost us too, would cost us, but it wouldn't be something in. Also, let us know that there's also three other swimming pools here in the area, the YMCA, the school board's swimming pool, and the Croc Center in South Omaha. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chuck Frederick, one-five-one-one Madison Street. Mr. Sullivan, you weren't here the last meeting, but the meeting before, you were nice enough to ask me to repeat my website, which I thought was very nice. So I wanna make sure now my website's in the minutes, chuckfrederick.com. And I, I like my website. I think it's a great website, not only because I, I'm writing in it, but I have my personal opinions, of course, which I'm entitled to, but I also have things in there from other people. I have articles from Bellevue leader, World Herald, in there. Other people can email me, and if they wanna maybe have their opinions in my website, they can do that also. So I think it's something we should be looking at, I hope people look at it, certainly through the primary election, for sure. In the past, I've talked about, about some of the things in the two-hundred-plus times I've been here, but we need to have a state audit. We need, we need the state attorney to come down here. I don't want taxes raised until we get a state audit, and I want- I don't want taxes raised until we get a state audit, and I want a monthly balance sheet. Those are things we should be having, and there's no need, we shouldn't do it. Other cities do it. It's a must. We need accountability. And I just say, just no, no taxes being raised until we have those things done. It's a simple thing to do. Thank you very much.
Are there others? See none? We'll move on to item number six, 15, closed session. None, 16 adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Shannon, second by Preister. Discussion? Questions? See none? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Reminder, solid waste meeting tonight at 7:00 PM, and our next meeting, February the 12th.